Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible).
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, this Tuesday evening, November 25th, 2025. Call the meeting to order. First, any public input on just the agenda lineup? If not, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Otten.
Thank you, we've got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia Lee, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Any commissioners or anybody in the public have anything that they would like pulled from consent? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Otten?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten? Otten?
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider an application for a retail on-sale liquor license on the following described premises to it: The Good Earth Farm LLC, plat of track 2C of Kroger's Edition, northwest quarter, 289851, Lincoln County, South Dakota, parcel number See applicant here?
Yep.
Do you want to come up and say hi, introduce yourself?
Nancy Kirstein, 28318, 466 Avenue, Lenox, South Dakota. I'm here to apply for a liquor license.
All right, anything special that you want us to know about your liquor license application?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on the commission?
Is it on and off sale or just off?
It's just on sale.
On sale?
Yep.
Now, this is something that you've got a place where you have parties and that's part of this?
Yep.
Commissioner Putnam, you want to make sure you use your microphone?
Use your microphone.
It's not an everyday bar then?
Um, it's, well, it's a seasonal operation. Right now, we're closed, so we'll open up again in May.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the commission? You're off the hook easy.
All right, thanks.
Are there any proponents here that wish to speak to the application? This is a public hearing. Any opponents? All right, hearing none, seeing none, and I'm going to close testimony.
Madam Chair, move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. I got a motion from Schmidt, second from Aaron's. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. All right, next is a public hearing pursuant to SDCL 72122, for the purpose of adapting the following supplements to the 2025 budget: A supplement to the account of support of poor in the general fund for account 101-4411-429430, $1,000, and to 1014411-429440, in the amount of $25,000, and to account 101-4411-429460, in the amount of $15,000, due to claims that have been paid for indigent, a supplement increasing the domestic abuse fund because of overpayment of $1,000, a supplement increasing 101413037300, in the amount of $371, 370, I can't even talk tonight, 371645 revenue received from clerk, a supplement increasing 1014130422120, in the amount of $65,000, a supplement increasing 1014130422130, in the amount of $30,000, a supplement increasing 1014130422200, in the amount of $1,000.
Hundred thousand.
Huh?
Hundred thousand.
Oh, a hundred thousand, sorry, thank you. Told you I couldn't talk tonight, or read, one of the two. A supplement increasing 1014130427000, in the amount of $5,000, a supplement increasing 101413042800, in the amount of $600,000, or, excuse me, $600. The increase to the 413 accounts is the unexpected cost of prosecution of cases, a supplement increasing 201431131700, in the amount of $205,000, underestimated collections for motor vehicle, a supplement increasing 2014750429900, in the amount of $30,000, percentage of real tax paid out to cities and townships. Sherri, do you want to say anything about any of those?
Yep, so I'm coming to you tonight to do supplements, just to clarify, because I have had some questions. The supplements are done when an account runs over its budgeted expenditures. So tonight, we are doing with the general fund, the 4130 Department, which is judicial, and the 4411, which is care of poor. We're also looking at the domestic abuse fund and the highway fund. One of these supplements, the one for the 4130, the judicial, could have been done as an automatic supplement, but in the name of transparency, I figured I'm going to be up here anyway, so we might as well get it all done. With that, I did do a current, where we're at with the judicial fund. Now, I had $371,000 that I could have done as an automatic supplement, so I'm thinking that I might have to do the whole thing instead of the 200, 2600, or 200,600 that I was going to do, just because as of today, with the claims that were paid out, we're 118,72139 over. This still would fall within the automatic supplement, so what I'm going to do, or what I'm going to ask that you do, is increase the supplement to the 1014130422120, to 183721, instead of the 65,000 that I originally requested.
Okay, and what did you want it changed to?
So it's going to be a supplement of 183721, on top of the other ones that I have listed. So I will be supplementing the entire revenue that we received of the 371645, and filtering it down into these accounts, with the schedule that I had submitted on line, with the exception of this change to 183721, for the 422120 account. Makes sense? Any questions?
Any commissioners have any question?
Sherri, thanks for being here, thanks for the transparency. So just to go down the list here, in order to figure out why these accounts did this, I'll just ask you in order, so if we take the first account, went over by 1,000, what says supportive poor in the general fund?
You're looking at the wrong one. If we could, if you want to stay on this one first, then I'll get to supportive poor next.
Yeah, well, I'm just going off the agenda.
Nope, I know, but, so right now, I've got the, for just this item, and then I can go to the next one, my next one is care of poor, so if you want to just wait one second, I'll probably answer the question when I go over it.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Okay, all right, all right, so then the 4411 Department, care of poor, is currently over budget by $24,312, $312.87. The request that I have is an amount of 41,000 to the different lines. Now, the reason that, the, if we look at the prescriptions, most of these, most of the care of poor comes from, we have a contract with Mihaa County, they take in applications for people that are requesting assistance, and that's kind of where they land, with the exception of the hospital. The hospital one is, we do a settlement, which you guys approved earlier in the year, so that created that to be over county boroughs, or just, but all of these have gone through applications with human services in, that are Mihaa that we contract with.
So really, if you want to boil this down, this is an overage due to the case that we compromised a while ago, for the most part.
It was, yes, you did a settlement on it, yep.
Right.
So yeah, that's where the 24,000 comes in on hospitals, that was the settlement on that.
Yeah.
What we're going to do, if you remember back when we did the budget, we did an increase to all these numbers than what we've normally had, because the SDKs, the ARPA funds, all that is running out, so people are going to be coming and relying on county money again for this. The funeral costs, I guess there was a lot of funerals that qualified, so I don't know how else to explain it, they've all gone through a vetted process, if they qualify for the funds, then they expend the funds.
And then I see the one here, it says there was an overpayment? Is that just an overpayment internally?
I'll get to that one too.
Okay.
Okay, so going next, onto the domestic funds. Domestic funds, they come from the fees that are deposited with the clerk of courts, then we get a part of it, and we have to divide it out to the places. We had budgeted $4,500 to the two agencies that we send it to, and I inadvertently wrote $5,000 out to each of them, causing an overpayment of $1,000. Now, this is not general fund money, this is not money that's, we're supplementing with, it's just, all's we're doing here is supplementing the budget, so it doesn't have a negative amount. The cash in the domestic fund is well over this amount, this is just simply for budgeting purposes, because we can't have a negative.
Right, and if I understand this correctly, this is what a county is statutory, statutorily obligated to pay, correct?
Yes, from domestic, or from divorce fees.
Yep.
So it's not coming out of the general fund, it's divorce fees that are collected by the clerk of courts that are put into this fund, and then we disperse them out.
And then if I recall correctly, these two agencies that we give money to, statutorily obligated monies to, we also give them money in this last budget, we also gave them money above and beyond the statutorily obligated monies as well, correct?
You did.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and then the last one is the highway. What I did is, we had revenues recorded in the highway of 1.7 million, we've received 1.6 million, I'm estimating about $150,000 for November and December, so I want to increase that budget by 205, but when I do that, I'm also going to have to increase the dispersment to the cities and the townships by 15%, and that's why I'm requesting the increase of 30,000 to the 429900 account. And that's my spill.
All right, any other commissioners have questions for Sherri?
With regard to the motor vehicle collections and the wheel tax issue, can you explain to me, like, did we think more people were going to be driving vehicles and?
We didn't think enough people were going to be driving vehicles, this would be monies that we're collecting, so when I, I'm increasing the revenue account, so I'm expecting more revenue than what we had, and when I do that, then I also have to increase the expenditure account that we send out for the wheel tax to the cities and the townships.
Thank you.
Other commissioners have questions for Sherri? All right, this is a public hearing, are there any proponents for these supplements? Any opponents? All right, if not, then I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second, Otten.
Thank you, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
No.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yeah.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is a second reading and public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the county by changing the zone of the property described as Lot 2 of Track 3 of Heisinga Farms, second addition, in the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of Section 2, Township 99 North, range 50 West of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The location is parcel 099.50.02.F302. Good evening, Toby.
Good evening, Toby Brown, Upperson County Planning and Zoning Department. As I just mentioned, this is an application changes all of the property, subject property is a few hundred feet south of the corporate limits of the city of Harrisburg. As you can see, within the 2050 Lincoln County Conference of Plan, this property does fall under the plan growth area, so with the plan growth area, we do look at the underlying, or the underlying zoning, or planning of the nearest municipality, that's the city of Harrisburg, this property is within the growth area, and subdivision authority of the city of Harrisburg. The city of Harrisburg did amend its comprehensive plan to identify this particular property as future residential. Subject property is owned A1 agricultural, as is all surrounding property. Subject property is undeveloped, it doesn't have any structures on it, it's currently being used for agricultural purposes. The one looking to the, directly to the north, that picture would be looking out of the property, so again, the property owner does utilize the property for agricultural production at this time. So the applicant did submit an application to the department, requesting the change of zone from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District, did identify that they would construct one single-family dwelling and an outbuilding on the property, as well as the existing screening to the north, and to the west and the east is existing, pretty good established tree grove on that property, or buffer to that property. So since this is not a rezoned, a conventional zoning district, this is, this is essentially a plan development district, where staff and the applicant worked together to identify the particular land uses that are allowed, as well as the development characteristics of the property, as well as staff did work closely with the city of Harrisburg staff to identify that the regulations would be consistent with their regulations upon annexation. So with this, uses permitted within this particular plan development district, the Mark and Teresa Plant, below Plan Development District, uses permit to be one single-family dwelling, agricultural uses would still be allowed, as is on the surrounding properties. Accessory buildings would be those that are incidental to the principal structures of the property, but not to exceed 6,000 square feet, which does fit with what the applicant is proposing for an accessory building. Parking and sign regulations would follow generally under those two specific sections. The land use regulations, again, this is a planned development, so the lot area would be 6.08 acres, that is the size of the existing lot, so there could be no subdivision of the property, or future development if it was subdivided. The height, front and rear yards would all follow the existing site, or the, those yard regulations. And then other regulations, the final development plan shall be required for development course with these regulations, so we can issue a building permit if it falls within these, within the conceptual drawing that was submitted with the application, as well as this is required in the city of Harrisburg, they want to make sure that utilities are arranged in such a way that they can be easily connected to city infrastructure. So what that essentially means is, instead of placing the septic field in the backyard, they place in the front yard, so that all of the interior plumbing would face towards the road, so that when the city connects it, they won't have to do any rearranging of utilities within the structure. So as far as analysis, when the staff report, staff did identify that this area's, character of this area is primarily residential, there is a number of residential structures along the road, as well as directly to the north, the city of Harrisburg, corporate limits are there, they just built a new school just to the north of this property, as well as there's some existing, or some existing and some proposed residential development within that area. If anything, this particular lot doesn't fit the character of the area, since it's being used primarily for agricultural purposes. Did have a neighborhood meeting on site, also, I've been in contact with a number of the neighbors of the area, they're concerned, if you recall, this application was before you a couple of years ago, their concern then, and their concern now, was to make sure that there wasn't more than one single-family structure allowed within this change of zone, and so I assured them that with this regulations, as I've just gone through, is that the only structure that would be allowed would be one single-family dwelling and an accessory building. So the neighbors did voice, you know, support of the application as it was identified. With that, Planning Commission did have a public hearing, they did unanimously recommend approval of that with one abstention to that, as well as there was no public comment regarding for or against the application at that time. So with that mentioned, I'll pass it back to you, the applicant, Mr. Bowe, is in attendance this evening, you can answer any questions, otherwise I'll gladly answer any questions that may have for staff at this time.
All right, thank you, are the applicants here?
Correct.
All right, the applicant want to come up and testify? Good evening, sir, can you just tell us your name and where you live?
Mark Bowe, 2600 South Care of Court, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Okay, can you just tell us about what you plan on doing?
Building a house, the plans are pretty much up there, so.
Yep, anything else you, anything else you want to say?
Not really.
Okay.
Answer any questions you might have.
All right, you can have a seat, and then if there's questions, we'll call you back up. Any proponents to this rezon? Any opponents? All right, hearing none and seeing none, any commissioners have any questions for either staff or the applicant? If not, they consider a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes, motion carries. Next, we have a second reading and public hearing.
Go back to your house.
An ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the county by changing the zone of the property described as the north 60 acres of the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 19, Township 99 North, range 51 West of the 5th PM, Lincoln County, South Dakota, from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The location and parcel is 099.51.19.4010.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Toby Brown, Upperson County Planning. Again, this application's for a request for a change of zone from the A1 Agricultural District to the PD Plan Development District. Subject property is a few thousand feet directly to the north of the city of Lenox. As you can see, this property is within the city of Lenox's growth area and subdivision authority. Subject property is identified as agricultural under the future land use map for the 2050 Lincoln County Conference of Plan. Subject property is 60 acres, is owned A1 agricultural, as is all surrounding properties. Subject property is undeveloped, utilized primarily for agricultural purposes. Shots looking on the property there, the one looking directly to the west would probably be the one closest. So the applicant did submit an application to the department to change the zone of the property from A1 agricultural zoning to the PD Plan Development District. With that application, they did submit a concept plan with the application, but as you see before you, this is a modified concept plan that was submitted with the application, I'll get a little bit into that a little bit more, but we have had a number of neighborhood meetings with this particular application, and with that, a lot of things have come out of there that we've modified within the Plan Development District and within the concept So again, this is not a conventional rezon, this is a Plan Development District, so therefore, the applicant works with staff to identify land uses and identify regulations that are applicable, as well as I've mentioned, we've had a number of neighborhood meetings to formulate a lot of the regulations that exist. So with that, this would be the USS Lenox Solar Plan Development District, there will be one subarea, the parcel, as it exists today, the 60-acre parcel would be the only subarea that exists. Permissive uses would be any permissive useless in the A1 Agricultural District, and then a non-accessory solar energy system of a 7-megawatt maximum. So really, all permissive uses that exist today on that property, as well as the addition of a non-accessory solar energy system of 7-megawatt. And of note, in the state of South Dakota, it's 100-megawatt and larger that would require state approval or PUC approval. Permitted special uses would be any permitted special useless in the A1 Agricultural District, conditional uses would be any conditional useless in the A1 Agricultural District. So both of those items are currently exist on that property today. Accessory uses, parking and sign would all be in conformance with the current regulations, density area and yard regulations. So within these regulations, the lot area would be 60 acres, so there could be no subdivision of the property within the timeframe, so currently, this property could be developed with one-acre lots, but the proposal here would be to lock them in at the 60 acres and not allow any subdivision of that property, unless there was a change of zone or amendment to these regulations. Maximum height would follow the regulations as they exist today, so in an A1 Agricultural District, you can go up to 35 feet in height. Front yard requirement, so currently, the front yard requirement would be 50 feet, but we're going to keep that there. Rear yard would be 30 feet, which is the current one, and the side yard would be 7 feet, and I'll explain that a little bit later after I go through the proposal. Other regulations, so the other regulations would specifically apply to the solar land use that would be proposed on the property, so the first and foremost, this is the typical standard, final development plan shall not be required for development course with these regulations. All outdoor lighting shall be shielded or used of hidden lines that cast light dollars to minimize the amount of light cast on the adjacent properties. Any change in the non-accessory solar energy ownership from the USS Lenox Solar shall require submit of a zoning permit to the Planning and Zoning Department. So this was a concern with a number of the neighbors, that how does this work once it's developed? So this would be required, that if there was any change of ownership, it would have to go through a zoning permit approval with the department. Prior to building permit issuance for the non-accessory solar energy system, the applicant should submit civil plans, including drainage plans, by a professional licensed engineer in the state of South Dakota, the Planning and Zoning Department. So as I mentioned previously, this property does fall under the subdivision authority of the city of Lenox. With that, they have the authority for any drainage type requirements on this property, so our ordinance doesn't apply to this, so there really isn't any drainage requirements from the county perspective of this, but we're putting, we did recognize that there was some concerns from the neighbors, so I want to make sure that we did put a requirement there, that they had civil plans be submitted to the department prior to issuance of a building permit. Again, that's above and beyond what would be required right now, because we don't, we wouldn't require that currently through the department, because we don't have jurisdiction for it. Prior to building permit issuance, the applicant should submit certification by a professional licensed engineer in the state of South Dakota, the foundation design of solar panels, this will accept professional standards given local soil and climate conditions. Again, always a concern with construction in our area is that we do have some different climate conditions and considerations, so we want to make sure that any type of construction that would meet those requirements. Operational areas, including fencing, and solar ray, shall be located within 50 feet from all adjacent property lines, and there are public right of ways and 500 feet from neighboring residences not in the same parcel of existing at the time of application for the change of zone. So this gets back to what I mentioned before, currently, that property, staff could issue a building permit for 7 feet on the side, which would be the north property line and the south property line, 30 feet would be on the west property line, and 50 feet would be on the east property line. But this requirement would be that all construction of the solar ray would be with 50 feet from adjacent property lines. So the site plan that I showed you, the concept plan that I showed you earlier there, that has a buffer of 50 feet from all property lines to the north, the south, the east, and the west. Screening consisting of a burned 2-1 max slope, with a supplemental plant materials including trees, shrubs, and ground covers, and/or continuous evergreen vegetated buffers shall be provided and maintained at all times around the perimeter of the fencing. Deciduous tree, shade trees must be a minimum caliper of 2 inches, deciduous orinal trees must be a minimum caliper of 2 inches, deciduous orinal trees must be a minimum caliper of 1 1/2 inches, evergreen or coniferous trees must be a minimum of 6 feet in height, the residential screen and northern boundary shall be assured on the approved plan. So the applicant did with the concept plan, agreed to put the evergreens, so there will be full evergreens along all property lines to the north, south, east, and the west, as well as, the applicant has been working with the residential property directly to the north of the property, they did identify at one time, an agreement that they had for additional residential screening or buffering on that northern piece, and that would be in accordance with that agreement, that the property owner to the north has with the applicant. Security fences on disrepair shall be repaired, planning screens shall be maintained in a neat and healthy condition, plantings that have died being replaced within the current and next growing season. So make sure that if vegetation does die, that it is replaced right away. Within the operational areas, power and communication lines running between the banks of solar panels, and to electrical substations, air connections with buildings shall be buried underground. So within the solar ray, there will be no above-ground structures or lines, they will all be buried underground. Foundation posts shall be installed using noise mitigating equipment, such as a vibrating post driver, or any other noise reduction method. One, this is for noise, but it's also to allow for, if there's any need for decommissioning, it makes it a simpler process. Decommissioning must occur within 180 days in the event the system is not in use for 12 consecutive months. The applicant shall provide a bond letter of credit or the establishment of an escrow account in the name of the landowner and a minimum amount of a hundred thousand dollars to ensure proper decommissioning. Any costs incurred by the county for the decommissioning as a result, when adequate, financial security shall be assessed back to the landowner. And that's typical whenever we have a nuisance or have different types of violations. If there's any actions taken by the county, those would be placed on the property, on the property's taxes. The decommissioning shall consist of the following. Remove of all structures and foundations. Remove of all power poles, cables, wiring, electrical devices associated with the project. Removal of all access rails and parking areas. Disposal of all power poles, cable wiring, electrical devices, structures, and other foundations. The permanent restoration of the site, including the following: site cleanup, followed by the general surface grading. And if necessary, restoration of surface drainage swells, ditches, and tile drains if present. Any excavation or trenching caused by removal of building or equipment, foundations, rack supports, and underground electrical cables will be backfilled with the appropriate material and level to match the ground surface. The rails and parking areas will be removed completely, filled with suitable subgrade material and leveled. Further restoration of soil and vegetation of the site is necessary to minimize erosion. So again, those are the specific standards or regulations for the Plan Development District that's proposed before you this evening. So as far as staff analysis, we did, when we received the application, did go through the process and the regulations that currently exist. There are no specific standards for non-accessory solar systems. We do have approved, the county has approved, accessory solar systems. A number of those on different properties throughout the county. But there was no specific standards for the non-accessory ones. So did work with the applicant, worked with a number of the neighbors to really identify the concerns that existed and if they could be mitigated. Again, the role of staff and the planning and zoning ordinance is to really try to mitigate the types of issues that might exist between adjoining properties. And so with that, the planning commission did conduct a public hearing. They did, there was a number of individuals, neighbors that spoke in opposition. The planning commission did recommend denial on affirmative motion with this application. Their primary concerns, I think if I were to address some, would be the concern of the Plan Development District being within this area. The second issue would probably be struggle really over the definition of agriculture and how it fits within the county regulations or development within it. Again, from a staff perspective, we did recommend approval of this application. Do feel that the regulations allow the conference of plan to really move forward with this particular property. The city of Lenox, as I mentioned, this is within their growth area. They did amend their conference of plan to support, through a land use perspective, this particular application on this particular property. As well as, did really identify that through this process, we could really work with the neighbors in a more effective way to really come up with some standards and some conditions that would try to mitigate some of the concerns that they had. As well as, this process allows it to come before you as the Board of Commissioners to really act on behalf of the application and the neighborhood. And so with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you. The applicant is in attendance this evening to answer any questions that you may have for them.
Thank you. Is the applicant here to come up and testify?
So I don't get any embarrassing messages. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Tina Munson. I'm here with US Solar. If you give me one moment, it looks like I will have to, we had a deck prepared, and we are going to do our best here. Didn't have it printed, and it looks like wasn't pulled up. Let's see, what can you see? Well, first of all, thank you very much this evening, and thank you for your patience here on this technical difficulty. As you can see, here's a picture of the project. You guys already saw this picture. However, I would just, one thing that is a little bit easier to highlight is that the green that you could kind of see here is the screening in which we plan to have around the site, and then you can see it there on the north side. Looks like we're going to get a computer set up here, but I'll just continue here as the best as I can. I wanted to highlight and really make sure that the county, the county Board of Commissioners here understands how the power is interconnected to the local district. You can see the site. Are you ready to switch me over here? Oh, beautiful. I really appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, here we go. So you can see the project here in the upper left in the green. What you see there is the existing infrastructure for the distribution lines in the area. And so USS Lennox Solar is proposing to generate local power and deliver it to the local community. And these green lines are, it shows you where the power goes and how it's distributed. It goes back to this Lennox substation, which then is further connected into the city of Lenox. And this is a little zoom out so that you can see that, one, how the power lines work within Lenox. And you can also see that there is an opportunity for the power to go towards the chancellor substation and that in the westerly direction. And so locally generated, locally distributed, locally used power. We had a lot of questions around why Lenox, why here? How did you land here? So I wanted to address that. So Xcel Energy, of course, started with a request for proposals. So the demand for power in South Dakota within their footprint is what initially drove us here. We cite projects near electrical substations as close as we can, as that is where we electrically deliver the power. However, there's always a component to that, so we need to be as close to the substation as possible. But in this case, that would be right up next to the city. So that growth of that city is something we don't want to be in the way of. And so there is a balance there of how close can we get to the load that needs it, along with staying outside of the growth area. And this landowner does have land, additional parcels of land that were reviewed, that do abut the city of Lenox. And then we also avoid commercially or industrially zoned properties, particularly because those properties have city infrastructure that we don't need, and they're typically higher and better uses for that, for those zoned properties. Sometimes, if you think about retail, you need people, foot traffic, right? You need people to be coming by your store. We are not that kind of business, so we want to leave that space for those kinds of businesses. Of course, we have to have a willing landowner. And as I already referenced, there's other properties that were considered, but this land, for example, is not in CRP like some of their other properties. And of course, the site is wet, so the production, the agricultural production on site is lower than other properties. So the tax revenue. I'm going to use some round numbers here, but about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the twenty-five year term. You can see how that would be distributed. About five hundred and ninety thousand gets distributed by the county. Fifty percent goes to the Lenox School District, thirty-five to the county. You get to retain that, fifteen to Perry Township. And then the remaining, call it two sixty, goes to the South Dakota's general fund, so to the state. On the right side, I made just some quick graphs so you can see the year one revenue. You're currently about, generating about one thousand four hundred dollars off this site in property tax revenue with solar. It's going to be about thirty-four thousand dollars. There's two types of taxes we pay. One is called the production tax, and that is a tax on how much power we generate. The second is called the capacity tax, and that's purely based on the size of the facility. Now, those are allocated slightly differently, where you have one hundred percent of the capacity tax will go to the county and be distributed. Twenty percent of the production tax goes to the county to be distributed, and that remaining eighty percent goes to the state. But you can see the rough estimates here at the bottom of what that, how that thirty-four, almost thirty-five thousand will be distributed. Other benefits. So by converting the farmed property that use, crop, real cropping into a pollinator mix, which we are proposing, we reduce drainage by as much as fifty percent. And that's purely just because we're covered for most of the year, as well as we have a deep root system that helps for infiltration. We know that there's already existing drainage issues that has been identified and brought to our attention by the neighbors. And there's a number of other drainage issues that, or drainage improvements that we have agreed to and committed to, which I'll talk about in just a little bit. Couple other benefits. We actually have to pay for those electrical infrastructure upgrades. And many times, your power lines are well over fifty years old. There'll be temporary construction jobs, twenty-five of them, as we anticipate here. And the last bullet here is new since the planning commission, but we heard the planning commission's feedback. And tonight, we are proposing and introducing to you the concept of agrivoltaics. US Solar has a lot of agrivoltaic projects already in our portfolio. And really, it's a combination of solar production, so not only are we going to be farming the sun, but we're also going to be folding in some other form of agricultural production. We already have a partnership with a grazer that has sheep out of South Dakota that comes to some of our sites in Minnesota. So they have agreed to work with us on putting sheep on this site to help with grazing. We also have a really great partnership with a nonprofit organization that helps emerging farmers find properties in order for them to grow food. And we're hoping to try to find a way to bring that here to South Dakota, bring that here to Lenox Solar that would be outside the fence. And so that is something that we are exploring, but it takes a little bit more time in terms of building relationships and finding the right partners in order to allow for, you know, vegetable farming or other form of farming outside the fence. We're committing to using the whole sixty acre parcel and in some form of agricultural production. We do know that the lease, the farmer who leases the property has also committed to farming outside of the footprint of the fence as appropriate. We believe we are in compliance with your comprehensive plan. You have a value-added development that primarily serves and enhances the rural community. So we've already talked about the locally generated electricity that will serve this rural community and beyond, but doesn't have pollution. I kind of call it a pure tax revenue. And I call it a pure tax revenue because you are receiving taxes, but we are not using your public services. So we're not, and we're also not using the school services, so we're not sending more kids to school. We're not beating up your roads with constant traffic. And of course, we don't have to use other infrastructure or public services. I've already walked through the electrical infrastructure upgrades, but it's here again. And then, of course, there's a capital investment that we are looking to invest into Lincoln County. It's fifteen million dollars between development and construction, and that would come to the county and to the community. And of course, the temporary construction work is another item that we've already referenced. Another compliance, another piece of compliance that we believe we have with the comprehensive plan is to protect the agricultural areas from uses which interfere or are not compatible with general farming practices. Of course, we don't impact neighboring farming practices, right? We don't emit dust. We don't have noise. We don't have smells. In this case, we're going to be significantly reducing stormwater runoff. But of course, we've also talked about the agrivoltaics piece, where we'll have sheep, and then hopefully some vegetable crop farming. And I did take note of the first public hearing applicant that may be a very interesting connection for us to make this evening. Some setback compliance. You can see the A-one requirement and the proposed, what we just called PDD. I believe your staff has walked through this, so I won't go into depth, but I will show that we are well over five hundred feet from each of the residents, and we did really work hard to place it in a way where we are giving that space as much as we can from residential homes. This timeline is to show the work that we've done. We have been working very hard at making this the best project that we can and helping mitigate the concerns the best we can. So we started all the way back in two thousand twenty-four with a virtual meeting, and since twenty-five has rolled around, we have been doing significant outreach. Both, you know, your onsite neighborhood meeting in August as required by your comp plan, but well before then. So we held our own open house in the city of Lenox. We had met individually with neighbors. This, of course, doesn't cover phone calls or text messages. We went to Perry Township. We went to Lenox City Hall. So we've done the work to communicate with our important stakeholders and doing our best to design a project that will work for this community. So here are some of the outcomes from the stakeholder engagement. We are willing and committed to maintaining that eastern drainage ditch. So there's a ditch there that hasn't been maintained very regularly over the years, and so we are committed to dredging it, grading it, whatever needs to be done to ensure that the water is flowing from the north. You can see that this culvert in this picture is the northeast corner, which is not in great condition. So we're also committed to either repairing that, we're also potentially considering removing that whole access. Just, we have to understand how the existing farmer could use our access, which would then help with the flow. We, of course, would have our own culvert under our own access. And then there's some, one of the other, sorry, one of the other items on the eastern side is some erosion control measures, some riprap that was requested for the southeast corner for the landowner to the south there, that was concerned about erosion. We have a temporary stormwater basin that we usually put in for construction purposes, and we have committed to leaving that permanently just to help if there's ever a situation where we want to hold as much water on our property as we can. And then the one item here, I just had the last bullet, is the drain tile review. So the neighbor to the west has, sounds like previously, been trying to get drain tile in to help with some existing water conditions on his property. We are open to adding the drain tile through our property, but there are a couple of considerations that we would ask the Board of Commissioners if you really want us to do this, to allow for caveats. One, we cannot drain our wetlands. So there are wetlands on site, and so obviously, how the drain tile would work, we have to leave those alone. The second item is that we would want to ensure whatever drain tile we put in does not flood the property to the south. They already take a lot of the water naturally that flows through that area. And our concern, of course, is if we're pulling water from a different area or where have you, that it, that we're not creating issues for that property owner to the south. So those are sort of the caveats in which, if that becomes a condition or an add, we would just like to ensure that we're not, we don't have to do it and then create problems for other neighbors. Visual concerns. We've talked about this, this eastern red cedar proposed around the perimeter, the additional swath of trees along the northeastern parcel. And so we've tried to cite this and do what we can to the best of our ability for the visual concerns. That is the conclusion of the presentation tonight. I appreciate your time. I'm very open to having answering questions. But I guess, you know, I will formally request that the Board of County, that the Board in front of us tonight approve this planned, planned district for this solar project.
Thank you. All right. Are there proponents for the project that would like to come up and speak?
Did you want to ask me questions later?
Yeah, we'll wait and see if anybody has questions.
Hello, Joshua Chase, representing the Lenox Area Development Corporation Board of Directors. We want to support this rezon to the Plan Development District, just for the fact of the added capacity in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Good evening, Commissioners. Nate Vander Plaats, City of Lenox. Just a note, you know, Mr. Morris mentioned it, just to reiterate, the city of Lenox did pass a comprehensive plan amendment that did take into account this kind of land use because this is within our planning jurisdiction. So it found basically that the land use is compatible with our comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Adam Shaw. I'm Superintendent of the School District in Lenox, and I just want to speak in behalf of, in favor of this. This obviously will generate tax revenue for our district. Also provides our children an opportunity to go learn about the agrivoltaics and then expand the learning for our ag kids as well, so I just want to speak in favor of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents that wish to testify tonight? All right. If none, then we'll move on to opponents. If you are opposed, come on up. Each speaker will be, you'll have five minutes, or I'm probably going to cap total testimony at a half hour. So if we can kind of not be redundant and things like that, that would be great.
That's why I'll go first then. Everybody else will be redundant. My name is Laurel Schaefer. I live at four six four seven eight two seventy-seventh street. I live at 46478 277th Street in Lenox. My husband Ken and I own the property that adjoins the south edge of this parcel that's under consideration for the solar farm. We're not crazy about the aesthetics of this project. They've worked hard to tell us they can plant trees. Trees don't grow real fast. We have some concerns about the maintenance, weed control, possible drainage issues onto our property, concerns about the wear on our gravel road during the construction of the process. And I believe that this project does not provide direct benefits to the residents of Lincoln County, Perry Township, or the City of Lenox. Ironic that that last slide talks about how beneficial this is. The tax benefits that, that were presented in the proposal amount to totally probably less than $35,000 per year with that money to be split between the county, township, and the school district, approximately maybe $3,500 a year for Perry Township over the course of the 25 years of that project. The project does not provide any long-term jobs. It will not lower anyone's electricity bill. I think there seems to be kind of a misconception, maybe free electricity in Lenox. I don't think that that's going to happen. The south edge of the project is just a little over a mile from the newest development in Lenox, but I don't believe that this solar garden is going to be an amenity that would draw new residents into the community of Lenox. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission summed it up when they voted against the proposal, saying it's a non-ag enterprise on ag land. And so we respectfully request that you support their recommendation and set a precedent for solar projects in Lincoln County by denying the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kerwin Hahn, 27605 464 Avenue, Lenox, South Dakota. I have the property that's right to the west of this proposed site. And yeah, I'm the guy complaining about drainage because my property does drain into this property and then ends up in Schaefer's and then comes back down to mine. The property does have some issues. A lot of years ago, I was, when I was a senior in high school, I farmed this ground and there was two ditches through that property. And over the years, as people got bigger machinery, they tore those ditches out. Well, that was fine until we got to the wet years. Now this property kind of ponds dead center and it doesn't flow real good. Now NRCS won't let her put perforated tile through hers back down to Schaefer's, but they will me and Dave Stropmer to the top of this property. One other concern I have besides drainage is this fence. Was anybody outside today when the wind was blowing? Them cornstalks that I have are going to be against that fence. Yay, hi. And then who's going to, who's going to deal with that? And one of the comments made about that transmission line will feed Chancer Substation. There is no Chancer Substation. We don't have one over there. And they want to put a driveway right to the middle of that property, all the way across. They had it up there before. And how is that going to help the drainage on this property? And my question is, if this is such a good deal, and this lady that's got it is for it, she's got a partial land just right down the road, less than a quarter of a mile, doesn't affect any neighbor, she could put it there. It's closer to Lenox's transmission line, just right across, right across from Schaefer's to the, to the south. But nobody wants to use that one. Why? Because this one's got drainage issues. And then they're going to push that on us because they aren't going to fix that drainage if they put a driveway through there. The only way that drainage is going to be fixed is if you drop tile from one end to the other, and it's going to have to have some perforated tile in there. Now, I don't know how they get it done, but by Lenox there, where Sue Steel Plant put their business, that used to be water all the way in the corner. That got filled in. Somebody told me you don't have to do that if you're private, not a farmer, but if you did it as a farmer, you'd lose your program improvements. But that's some of the issues that I have with it. And I would like you guys to take a good, hard look at what the planning people said. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Sarah Stever, 46850 276th Street, Lenox, South Dakota, Perry Township. I am not in support of the proposed solar garden northwest of Lenox. This is just the latest example of an out-of-state company funded by an out-of-state bank that wants to take advantage of tax credits and perceive unrestricted area of the country. Solar farms are not agriculture. They are figuratively a wolf in sheep's clothing, but sometimes a literal sheep. Solar farms take our most fertile, productive land and use it for inefficient and intermittent energy. They change our landscape and map for the better and for apparently a measly $35,000 a year in tax revenue. Apparently, planning and zoning rightly rejected this project. We are not ready to bring solar farms into our county. We have no county ordinances specifically for solar farms in place, a process that gives us time and citizen input to deliberate and decide what we want to do with solar farms. Is this just the beginning of the plans from a company from Connecticut? That's right. The company that cleverly names themselves after, after our town is actually from Fairfield, Connecticut. And who exactly are these people? Have they ever decommissioned one of their 85 installations? How did it go? Is $100,000 enough to accomplish this? If it's enough now, how about in 10 or 25 years from now? And this isn't their only LLC, so will they even be around then? Or will they be around if something goes wrong? Will they have cash in hand when it does need to be decommissioned? Does Sunrise Bank, who is financing this project and headquartered in St. Paul, share the values of the community of Lenox? Their stated goal is net zero banking and you are a certified member of the Global Alliance for Banking and Values, a global ESG-driven organization. Why not use a South Dakota-based bank or even a bank in Lenox? Are the construction jobs for South Dakotas, or will the contractors come from out of state? Will they be licensed and bonded to be in South Dakota? We do not need to rush to approve this just because they need the offer. Let's put our ordinances in place and for the sake of my neighbors, let's do this right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Andrew Nielsen, 27643 465th Avenue, Lenox, South Dakota. Adjacent landowner to the project to the north side. They have worked with us on trying to mitigate some of our concerns. They did take into consideration not adding the landscape berm to give us immediate benefit to our, our value and view. Our house is a southern-facing house. Obviously, they're going to plant some trees that are going to be five to six feet tall. That might gain us some good leverage for our view in about 15 to 20 years when this is about ready to be decommissioned. So I did request to add the landscape berm with the trees to obviously grab, get some immediate benefit to my property. Another thing to bring up is, well, majority of their sites are, are located on paved roads or in secluded areas. This is obviously on a township road right off there. They aren't taking dust into consideration onto a lot of their parcels. All these locations within U.S. Solar and Google Earth that I've found in Minnesota, they're all off paved highway systems. They're not used to taking in the dust pollution. Dust pollution can decrease efficiency up to 30%. So while they're, they have no plans of putting dust mitigation on these, on the gravel road for the next 30 years. So when we get into these dry spells, there's going to be dust pollution out of this, decrease the value of the efficiency. Therefore, it's not going to be a green energy, 100% reliable grid system. The other thing I have is just the flooding concerns that everyone else has brought up. The main concern is adding that five foot, that fence around there, this is what the property looks like when we do get major flood events. You add some corndocks and rubble into the fence, it does, then it would just increase backup onto my property. Therefore, I guess, I don't know who's going to be liable for flooding or backing up water on my property, whether it's county or is it U.S. Solar, I'm not sure. For these reasons, I guess the next thing is the zoning, zoning ordinance for plant They, the project does not align with the neighboring ag zoning. Granted, they're going to be adding temporary grazing one to two months a year. It does not make solar farming a true agricultural use. For these reasons, zoning conflicts, inefficiencies, flooding risks, property impacts, and follow your own planning and zoning recommendations, I respectfully urge the commission to vote no on this plan development.
Thank you. Any other opponents tonight that would like to testify?
Hi, just really quickly, Krista, with Lincoln County. As I'm sitting here listening to both sides, just had a couple of questions that I was typing out. So who actually funds this company? What is this company about? And why do they want land in South Dakota? In the rest of 25 years, it's a long time for potential alternative use for, of land and growth. And if my math is correct, the 25-year plan works out to bring in less than $50 per acre per month. And that is before dollar adjustment for future years. We all know that $1 25 years ago does not seem that it does now. Just look at a candy bar. $1 again, isn't the same. Is there nothing else locally that can be used for the future instead? And how much per month, per year for 25 years is the projected value for this company? I'm guessing they're making a lot more than that. So those are just some questions I have, and I would be a me too with the opponents here. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents?
Amy Harms. I'm not sure what I could say that hasn't already been said by the citizens of Lincoln County. I would just urge a no vote.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I believe that planning and zoning has it right, and you should follow their lead. Vote no for this solar farm. We don't need it. It's going to interfere with our agriculture. And if you have driven past many of these sites, it is not pretty. And it's even worse when they start not working or when they start to, yeah, put it, when they have to get rid of it. It's not pretty, and it's just, it's not something we need in Lincoln County. Please, go with planning and zoning and vote no.
Good evening. Scott Montgomery, Fairview. I think we're getting the cart ahead of the horse here just a little bit. I don't think this is ready. I think we need to investigate zoning and planning and get some ordinances put in place before we, before we start this thing. I'd appreciate your efforts towards that first and not start something we regret later on. Thank you.
Any other opponents which just testify tonight? All right. If not, I will move back to the proponents for any rebuttal testimony that they would like to give. And I'm going to limit that time to a total of 10 minutes.
Good evening. Thank you again. I think a lot of what you heard tonight, we have done our best to, to mitigate in the, in the best way that we can. So maintenance of the site, I believe they, you know, of course, we want to maintain our site. We want to, we want that to look nice. So the comments about the corndocks, I believe the, the, there's requirements here in these, in this list of all calm conditions in which we have to come on site and maintain the site. I also want to just note that the, the road within the facility will be at grade, so we're not going to be creating any sort of obstacle for the water to drain. I think just to be really clear, and also that is another reason why a berm on the north side would be challenging is putting in any sort of berming in this sort of drainage consider, condition is challenging. A lot of things don't like to live on berms. And so ultimately, at the end of the day, you'd plant a tree, the likelihood of that tree to live is poor. So then you replace it, and then now you're just replacing it with a smaller tree and not giving it the time to grow. And so we don't, we, we haven't been successful at having that work for us across, you know, 100 projects that we have existing. We are privately held, so we are, we have no, we have no third-party equity. We don't have any foreign investors. We are privately held by the owner, Marty Mobley, who is, he, he is out of Connecticut, but U.S. Solar is headquarters, headquartered and started out of Minneapolis. So that's just a distinction there. I think when we, when we think about timing and, and how long we've been working on this project, we have been here for quite some time. We've been working for almost a year here with your staff, who, by the way, have been fantastic in working with, with us as we, as we have gone through this and trying to understand, should we come in for a rezone? How do we, is there a CUP that we should do? And ultimately, the tool that is available, from my understanding, is what's in front of you this evening. And we believe that the conditions and the protections have been built in, and we have committed to far more than what's, what's listed there as well. And, you know, and we just respectfully disagree that this is not, that this place is not a place to put a solar farm. You know, we, we hear a lot about concerns about taking prime farmland. We're on a wet, but we're on a wet parcel. So we're doing, you know, we're, we're doing our best to find the right place, and this is what it looks like. This is, this is what a solar development looks like, that's at least on a community-sized project. Of course, you can get 100-plus megawatts and you're talking 1,000-plus acres, and that's much different sort of issues that, that come, come up. But I, this, this is the place. If you, if, if the commissioners have any questions specifically about drainage, I did bring our drainage expert here with us, so I'm happy to also pull him up. I have no other comments in terms of rebuttal, but I'm happy to take questions if there are.
If you'd like your drainage person to come up, that would probably be a good idea.
Brad?
It's your, it's totally up to you, but we have seven minutes left, so you might as well use the time.
Brad, welcoming with Westwood Professional Services. I came from their St. Cloud office. Primarily on solar projects, we try not to change the grade too much unless it's absolutely necessary. So if we're putting in a road, we will subcut the soil, replace it with gravel. We're not building a mainline highway. It's just something for maintenance, traffic to use. And during construction, of course, Tina mentioned that runoff actually decreases. Real simple reason for that, runoff actually, from a farm field actually gets off the site pretty quickly. A solar site is essentially a grass field. Yeah, the water hits the solar panels, but then it hits grass, has to go across. So we have fifth, like she said, 50% reduction in a 10-year event. We measure the rate it runs off. We measure the volume that runs off. The rate is reduced by 50%. The volume is reduced by 30%. Solar is the only kind of project I work on where rates are reduced, but they do go down significantly just because you're planting prairie grasses and things of that nature. They have deeper roots, which loosens the soil over time. It's not irrigated, so it does develop that deep root system. Anything else you wanted me to add? Okay. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you. I'm in a closed testimony, commission discussion time. If the commissioners have questions for proponents or opponents to provide additional testimony, you can certainly do that.
I have a couple of questions. First for the staff. Toby, will, I see that the road hall agreement, there is no road hall agreement put into the conditions. Is that because we require that in another regulation? Or was it not contemplated here?
So, so as, as the applicant did say, we did meet with the township, discuss with them, as well as, of course, we send notification to them. They do have their ability to create a road hall agreement, so we typically don't get in the way of that. So there was no really discussion from them that they wanted one in there, but they do have the authority to put one in place to, to do it themselves without our intervention with it. So that was kind of the mindset of staff at that time.
Another question I have. Another question I have is, uh, what's going to be the size of the drainage basin? And specifically, is it going to meet the requirements that we normally do for these, I shouldn't say these kinds of developments, but for developments in general of this size?
So drainage is really a site-specific issue, um, or concern. And so as noted in the, in the conditions, we're going to require that they have a South Dakota licensed engineer would present a drainage plan along with the civil plans. With that, they're going to make sure that it's in conformance with state statute, which is the, the post-development rate equals the pre-development rates. So to, to tell you what the size of the pond is now, I'm sure the engineer could tell you that, but I'm going to say, I'm not concerned with that now until I actually see, uh, the South Dakota-based engineers report that, that we would get if this is approved.
So we're being asked to approve it tonight without actually seeing whether the drainage basin would conform with what is required. Is that correct?
Uh, correct. We don't have, we don't have analysis at this time, no.
Next question I have is, would any of the berms that are contemplated here be built on top of those wet areas that we saw in those pictures there? And would that change the flow of the drainage by constructing such a berm?
As, as noted in the, um, the concept plan, there wasn't any berms placed within there at this time. The berm is what the property owner to the north is requesting kind of a change to what was the original agreement that the landowner to the north had with the, with the applicant.
So there are, um, so if I read the list of conditions here, and maybe I'm just conflating it, and I apologize for any confusion, but I seem to recall that we were going to, as part of the conditions here, require some kind of berm?
That's an and/or, uh, the applicant's chosen not to construct the berm would go with the straight, um, uh, evergreens essentially.
Okay. So when that one, that gentleman opponent who testified, um, I think what he said was he had asked for berms, and then what I heard from the proponents was they had concerns about trees growing on top of berms. So just to clarify, the app, the proponents are telling us now, you're not going to do berms, you're just going to do trees. Is that correct?
The, the concept plan that's before you is just, there's no berms on it. The, the berm would be what Mr. Nielsen, the property owner to the north requested, um, after there was an agreement between the applicant and that. And I think Mr. Nielsen's concern is the, um, is the height of the trees, um, but with the neighboring agreement, um, he can continue to work with the applicant to make sure that those trees are of a higher establishment prior, you know, as soon as possible.
And, and one final question, Toby, and thank you for answering all these. How did you calculate the decommissioning cost?
So as part of, so as the applicant said, we've been working with the applicant for two, over two years. We've worked with the, um, property owners as well. So within that timeframe, we did do some extensive research, uh, did visit other sites to discuss with other planning and zoning departments. They specifically identified that, um, or through our research, we identified that the only plan, uh, the only zoning district, uh, and surrounding areas that utilize solar would be within the A1 agricultural district. With that, we did identify a number of decommissioning plans, including the state of South Dakota. Uh, the 100,000 is more than what typically would be required on most ordinances that we researched. Uh, most, uh, decommissioning plans would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $50,000. So we arrived at the $100,000. But again, uh, we don't have any research to, or with a specific proposal to know how much the actual cost would be with it. But again, we've discussed that, uh, the applicant, uh, or the property owner in this case would be responsible for any decommissioning would occur. The $100,000 would be, um, the minimum amount that would be there, um, so that we would encourage the, the property owner, uh, if this application is approved, uh, to work with, uh, the applicant to ensure that that, uh, escrow amount is, is sufficient for the, uh, for the property owner. Again, to, to kind of just summarize, again, that's a minimum amount that we've identified. Would work with property owner to make sure that they work with the applicant to, to make sure they're comfortable with whatever that amount is.
Uh, in my, I have one more question. It was just triggered by one of your prior responses. I think the proponent said earlier that the grade would not be raised above the road level. Is that correct?
Um, my understanding is they're proposing no grade changes on the property, that they just install the solar facilities on the property as is.
That was going to be my follow-up question was, so there will actually be no grade change, period?
Uh, I wouldn't say period, but I would say that they're gonna, they don't try to change the grade, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They don't need, I'll, I'll clarify, I don't think they need to change the grade with this project, because we're not, you know, they're not constructing anything on ground level.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Did I hear you correctly that you said that we have no solar farm ordinances on record?
No, I, I think there's, uh, with the zoning ordinance, there's a number of ways that you could place solar. I've mentioned that we've done a number of accessory solar, uh, but there's no specific conditions or standards for non-accessory solar in the zoning ordinances.
Okay. So, um, I have really struggled with this, because I was the commissioner on planning and zoning, um, didn't vote, obviously, but I listened to all the testimony. And so now I have a question, because my understanding is that at planning and zoning, um, all the electricity was being, um, shipped out of Lincoln County. And now I hear tonight that it's going to be delivered to the locals. Is that, is that 100%? Or where does that, where does that get delivered to? And then, uh, but I heard that there's no reduction in their rates. Is that all correct? Not correct? Am I misunderstanding or what?
Uh, defer that to the applicant, but, but again, the service lines don't connect anywhere else except within that chancellor Lennox area.
Right. If that, if it goes there, they can still off-sell it to someone out of state, right?
I'll defer that to them, but I don't know if the infrastructure exists for it to go outside of that service area.
Um, and thank you for your questions, because I had those on mind too. And, um, is the owner, actual owner of the property here tonight? Or just the people that are looking to?
Um, I don't believe the owner's in attendance tonight, no.
And I think that was one of the other, uh, uh, items that P&amp;Z was, um, concerned with, that the actual lease, uh, for that long-term lease was not there either. So, um, all right, well, um, I, um, I thank you for your questions, Commissioner Arons. Thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Munson, did you want to address any of that?
I've got, I've got some questions when you're ready, or just for her, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, yes, I'm happy to answer those questions. So, um, a couple, uh, pieces for, uh, consideration this evening. We do have a decommissioning requirement within our lease with the landowner, so that is a, a piece that they've already, we've already built in for protection for the landowner. That's pretty common within our industry. To be clear, while I was talking about the ax, the road that we will have to use to get to our, uh, mechanical equipment will be at grade. So that's, so just to be, uh, clear on that. For Commissioner Otten, I, I'm not sure how the planning commission, uh, that the under, the understanding came that this would be shipped out of the state, because, um, that, what I shared tonight is, is what it is. And so I apologize if that wasn't particularly clear. I think we did add those maps in this evening just for clarity, uh, but that power, electrons are used where they're needed. So they're going to flow to whoever's turning on their lights or turning on their dishwasher or insert whatever other electrical, you know, use that you, that you, uh, normally do at any time of the day. So this facility is going to, when it's, when the sun is out, obviously at night won't work. So, but in, in the day, it'll be putting out power, and it'll go to wherever the electrons are needed. And that first and foremost is going to be that green infrastructure I showed you. So that's where it's going to go, whether it goes to Lennox or to chancellor, um, it'll go where it's needed, and that'll all be on the local, the local, uh, uh, infrastructure here. And unfortunately, we did talk to the landowner, and we did request to see if they would be, would be willing to come in attendance or write a letter, and the property owner did decline. I think it's not always easy to be, uh, in a controversial situation. So I think that, that is their choice. They also have other property in this area that, um, is very close to development, um, you know, like the city of Lennox, and so I think there's a little bit of, um, just, you know, they, so it's a little nerve-wracking. So I think that they chose to, to decline those invites on our behalf, or, you know, from, from us. So that is unfortunate, but it's not atypical for a landowner to not be in attendance, which is a little, um, maybe, uh, atypical for you.
Ms. Munson, did you have a question for Ms. Munson?
Yeah. What's the longevity of this? I mean, uh, how long do they figure this will last?
So typically, we assume the life of a project can be anywhere between 25 and 40 years. Probably not, it's probably closer to 25 than it is to the 40. What you'd start to see in 25 is typically, um, what we call a repowering event, and you guys are probably familiar with this, maybe from wind turbines. But at some point, the panels from 15 years ago were, produced significantly less power in the same footprint as the panels do today. And so there's always a consideration of repowering the site, or if it's no longer economic, of course, decommissioning it. So, which I think you have, we've discussed.
Are there something about carbon credits or anything like that with this? Is the owner, is he getting carbon credits or anything like that?
Uh, the landowner?
No, the owner that's putting in this.
Uh, US Solar. So US Solar, uh, typically in this situation, when we, we would in this case have to work with, uh, Excel Energy to take the power from our project, all of that goes to Excel. So there's all sorts of pieces. There's energy, there's capacity, there's the renewable energy credits, there's ancillary services, there's kind of a bundle of, uh, electrical deliverables that will all go to Excel. And your carbon credit question is the renewable energy credit that will go to Excel.
Okay. So then the owner that's putting this in, he's not selling carbon credits off or anything like that, or?
In this, no. In this case, we are not splitting that deliverable. It's all one package to?
And everything goes to the energy company that's at hand?
Correct. And I, I think it might be good if, uh, Brad could address the berm and drainage impacts question that came up, because that's a concern that we brought up.
I'd like to answer your question about ponds. There's two reasons to build ponds. One is a requirement of the state, and that has to do with erosion control. So the state requires that you build a pond that, that will collect 3,600 cubic feet per acre. Doesn't matter what acre, it's every acre that you have under construction. So that's the pond that's shown. The second reason to build a pond is if you are doing a lot of paving, the rate increases and runs off faster, which is why you would build a pond. This site, the water will actually run off slower. That said, quite often on solar projects, the construction pond will get built, and it will get modified with an outlet or something and act as a rate control pond, even though it's not necessary. It's already there. It's a small change to make. Why fill in a pond? That's a lot of times what happens on solar sites. For berms, I think the question is whether or not you can keep trees alive on a berm. Obviously, the groundwater is not there to get to the roots, so it, it would have to almost have irrigation. We've all driven by a lot of projects. I have a small solar project near where I live, and there's all these nice pine trees that were planted, and now every one of them is dead, basically. It's a really complicated situation to make sure that those roots can get to moisture. If they can, I'm sure you can pu- plant on a berm, but you have to be conscious of what the berm is made out of. I don't have an answer for that. We have landscape people that could probably bore us to death with that topic, but I know that this soil has a lot of water, so I don't think planting the trees at grade would be an issue. Maybe it's a good, a good possibility on a berm, but I don't, I don't know enough about that.
Sir, can you address, there was some comments, uh, both from, uh, uh, proponents about drainage tile, saying they kind of wanted to wait and see. And then there was some concerns by, uh, the gentleman sitting behind you there that I'm looking at. Could you address, um, from your perspective, what you see as the issue with drainage tile?
Yeah. The, the first question, or the first comment was about bringing a drain tile through the site. Essentially, what's happening is he would like to tile his field, but the only way to outlet his tile would be to come through this project. So in order for him to be able to in, to improve the drainage on his project, you'd need to extend a tile through this project. The one issue is it's a wetland where it would need to go, so it would have to be a, a non-perforated pipe. So if the, if the applicant were to do that, it would, it would be an expense to get that through there that really wouldn't benefit the project, but that's what he's interested in, is being able to get a tile through there.
Under the state drainage law, if this property were to remain zoned as is, he would be able to retain the right to install non-perforated without going through your property, wouldn't he?
I don't know that. And then the other comment was about building a road and that that would, because the site has very, you know, it, it's not flat, it has some grade, but it's not, it's not steep by any means. If you were to build up a road that's a foot tall, it would hold back all that water on the backside. That's a concern for them. So like I said, we would, we would keep that road at grade, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be built up.
Thank you. I, I appreciate your answers.
Yeah.
Brad?
One question.
Sure.
So when Mr. Han was up here, he talked about, um, he talked about ponds and holding, and that when it would rain or, again, or in sight of rains, that it would adversely affect his property. Can you say, uh, that through the changes that you are proposing, either ponding or ditching or ever, will not negatively affect his property? If the grade is not changed, there wouldn't be an impact.
Okay.
There would be less runoff from the site, but I don't know that that's the issue. The site actually gets inundated with water. So regardless of how much falls on it, doesn't matter if it's grass or black dirt, but the intent would be to not change the grade.
Okay. Okay.
Any other commissioners have questions for anybody?
One more question.
Go ahead.
No. If?
Who do you want to address the question?
Uh, to the madam there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the electrons that are, if they're not needed in Lennox, where, where do they go then?
So if you have, I, so I don't know the, I, I'm not Excel Energy, right? So I don't know the flow of their system. I don't know exactly how the electricity would flow. I'm not, I'm also not a power systems engineer. But presumably, if we're producing more than what Lennox and all those power lines need, then that would mean that we are fully powering the whole city and out to the west, which in and of itself is kind of an incredible fact. But if there, if, if we are fully powering everybody who touches this system, and we still have more, I, I don't, I don't know where that would go. I don't know the system enough to tell you that it would go to the transmission line or whether it would, um, or how they, I don't know how they would manage that. But I guess in that event, we've powered the whole city, right? Like, that would be, that would be a pretty phenomenal thing for us to be able to say that you are not only a that you are not only approved, but you generated and now you're using and you are fully independently powering your city, at least in this part of the county. I think that'd be a pretty amazing thing to say.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission? All right, any discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a few comments. In order, when you were talking, if you, any of you have ever traveled from Albert Lee, Minnesota to Hutchinson, Minnesota, every community from Albert Lee to Hutchinson has a solar farm, every one of them. And it varies from 15 to 40 acres. And they do exactly what you say you're doing. It provides low-cost energy for those communities to grow. So I, I commend that fact that Lenox, if it were possible to have a source available to them, is a pretty remarkable thing. The other thing is what I'm listening to, several different things tonight. We're talking in many ways, some people are, growth is pretty important and we're going to talk about growth probably after we're done here. But growth is a, something that this county needs to live on. Cause if you do not have growth, there's only one way to supplement your budget and that is through taxes. And that's something that no one wants to pay. Everybody is looking at peer to try to reduce the amount of taxes that counties get. So, so, so growth becomes pretty important. And when you look at opportunities to fund education, I know that our superintendent is here. And there is another situation that is going to be looked at by the state to try and figure out how to take some money away from your ability to do that. So any supplemental monies that we can get from growth certainly helps educate our kids. As far as, when I listen to people, you say about out of state, like there's something wrong with people coming from out of state. Well, most developers that bring significant economic impact to our state and to our county come, may come from out of state. And I don't know that, we live in an interstate commerce world so that we have only limited ability or a sign that says we're really concerned if you're out of state. So that doesn't make any sense to me. The other part is, I listened a lot to this year, to landowner rights, that the landowner has rights to do and to maintain what they want to do with their property. And I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think landowners should have rights. We went through all of that. But here we have a landowner, and admittedly is not here, but who has given a green light to an organization to put a farm up. And yet we are having severe, you know, objection to that. I will be very honest with you. Evan and I went over the farm yesterday and I drove with him and listened to him and I spent extra time there. So, you know, sometimes commissioners can have an opinion on something. But Toby, I have a question for you. Does this application meet all of our planning and zoning requirements? You don't have to get up, you can just say yes or no.
I'm going to ask him to get up.
I'll defer to the chair. So again, this is a plan development district. So you're establishing regulations within it. So your conference of plans said that there's a need for, for public, private utility infrastructure, which is what this is, in appropriate areas. The best way to do that would be through the plan development district. I know everyone says we should have regulations for this, but that just becomes a check the box and that there is no really discretion. Tonight, you have discretion before you, so did the planning commission, their recommendation. So in a roundabout way, yes, it does, as, as prescribed within these standards or conditions, it does meet your conference of plan, correct? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll follow up with that. We put a lot of time, energy and money into developing a comprehensive plan that will guide us for the next, I don't know how many years, decade. And we took input from, I don't know how many hundreds and perhaps thousands of people. So as a commissioner, I feel my obligation is, when I voted for a comp plan, I voted to follow what that comp plan says. So I may have my own personal feelings on this thing. I may, I may not like solar farms. I may not like where it goes. But where I'm coming from, and this is just me, we put a lot of time and energy, so if I turn my back on, on my own comp plan that I passed, then why did I even have one? Why did I not just throw everything in the wind and when anything comes up, we say, well, we like it or we don't like it? So we have to have some guidelines. So I'm going to vote for this. And I do that because I want to make sure you understand that I think I'm following the rules set forth by this commission to follow a comp plan. And I'm not saying that I diminish any of your concerns. I agree with you, if you've ever saw a berm, trees don't grow on berms. We've tried that before. They don't. So what kind of trees you plant, that could be something. So while I understand and I feel all of yours, but I am going to vote for this and for those reasons. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I've got something to say here, though. I kind of like the idea of maybe experimenting with some new power. I would hope to think it would work better than it has in the past. As far as money going to any education, we learned when we had video lottery, that didn't work. So that's a joke. I would like to hear and figure out a few more things. So I'm not, at this time, ready to vote on it. Yes, I'd have to vote no at this time, but I would still open to hear things.
Thank you. Any other discussion amongst the commission?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
We need more energy in this country. There's a huge demand for energy. The population increases, the number of electronic devices does, the, the need for more electricity is manifestly clear. But at what cost? And the cost tonight that we're being asked to impose upon that farmer, that gentleman right there who got up to speak, is he won't be able to use non-perforated tile and to use that route to drain his property anymore by virtue of the fact that we want to engage in some kind of economic development. Growth for the sake of growth, the growth isn't paying for itself. If it was, your taxes would go down, not up. It's not happening. We're trying to appease the economic development gods in the sky, but they're not reciprocating. And we're told tonight that if we don't engage in these kinds of projects, we're anti-growth. No. We're against growth at obscene cost. And the cost that I don't want to impose on another landowner tonight is stopping and foreclosing and preventing him from being able to drain tile that farmland. That's what I'm concerned about. I'm, I'm just a county commissioner. I'm not on the Public Utilities Commission. I'm not on the state legislature. I'm not in Congress. I don't decide national economic policy. I don't decide energy policy. I just decide planning and zoning issues. And the planning and zoning issue that I see before me tonight in a planned development area is I have to ascertain whether what we're doing is in an appropriate area. The question isn't whether this complies with the planning and zoning comprehensive plan. It does. But that's only a surface deep analysis. We've got to dig even deeper to ascertain whether this is an appropriate area. This is an appropriate area. It's obvious why the people are building this here. I don't fault them. It's bad farmland. It's heavily flooded. It's wetland area. If I could be satisfied, if we had a system in place where we've got these drainage plans and these basins and all these calculations done beforehand, so we can figure out whether or not we're going to harm that farmer right there, I'd have more confidence in this. And I know this applicant has plenty of resources to be able to bring that stuff to the table beforehand. So tonight, on the discreet question of whether I can support this application, this isn't a vote against economic development. This isn't about growth. It's about whether or not we're going to harm the drainage issue on this piece of property with the adjacent piece of property. And for that reason, I'm a no.
Any other discussion amongst the commission? I, I concur with Commissioner Schmidt on this. And we spent tens of thousands of dollars on a comprehensive plan that is new in all respects. I mean, it's not, it's about a year old. We had a public hearing on that comprehensive plan. We have a landowner who wants to do what they want to do with their property. I think this is a benefit to the taxpayers of Lincoln County. So I'm going to be a yes on this one. So if there's no further discussion, I'd consider a motion.
Move to deny the, the application?
I second it.
I've got a motion to.
At this time.
I've got a motion to deny. I'd ask that you make the motion in the affirmative so it's clear what we're doing. If you would amend that.
Well, motion to approve the project?
Thank you. Commissioner Putnam, do you want to second that motion?
Yep.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronson?
No.
Otten?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
No.
Landin?
Yes. Motion fails. Or, yeah, motion fails. There we are. We're going to move on with our agenda. We'll move on to item five on our agenda. It's closing conference with board action to follow legislative audit for the audit ending 2024.
Hi, Sheri Lynn, Lincoln County Auditor. As you stated, it is the closing conference for the audit ending 2024 and I have David here to discuss that with you.
Good evening, everyone. Date of wide-later Department Legislative Audit. As Sheri said, I'm here for the closing conference for the financial and compliance audit of Lincoln County for fiscal year ending, or sorry, fiscal year, yeah, fiscal year ending December 31st, 2024. The first item we're going to go over is the Board of Governance Letter. I don't want to take much of your time over this item. It's mostly items that we, as a audit performer, that we are required to communicate to those charged with governance. However, I have a whole lot to say about this. The only parts that I really want to go over is, oh, I guess let's make that two, two parts. Corrected and uncorrected in the statements. Any material errors that we found during the audit were posted to the statements with Sheri's approval. Any items that were not posted were deemed not material to the statements and effects of those were discussed with Sheri. The other item is, we have requested certain representations from management that are included in the management representation letters dated November 20, November 25th, 2025. That is this letter. Bear with me for a second here. We'll just go this way. Oops. This is a letter from Lincoln County to us as the Department of Legislative Audit. These are the representations that we've requested. I guess this would be where Sheri would request that you motion to sign the letter.
All right. Any public input? All right. If not, commissioners, do you have any questions for David?
David, thanks for being here tonight. Any specific issues that we need to be aware of?
I will refer to that to the third item that I, that's attached to the agenda under the management letter. We will discuss the items that we found that were deemed important enough to be brought to the Board of County Commissioners.
And what is that?
Uh, well, I guess we can just go over it.
I guess what I'm getting at is, can you speak to it?
Yes. So. Bear with me, man. Technology is not being my friend at the moment. These appear to be the same letter, so hold on a second here. So this is what we refer to as the management letter. It's two pages. The first page here is kind of explaining the rest of the letter. So we have deficiencies known internal control and then we have violations of laws, rules and regulations and provisions of contracts or grant agreements. If we go to the second page here. Down here, we will note that there were no violations of laws, rules, regulations, provisions of grants and of contract and grant agreements that we felt that needed to be brought to your attention. However, we did note deficiencies in internal controls. We have a deficiency in accounting for cash assets. This is a written comment that is discussed further in the current audit finding, number 2024, number one. This boiled down to, there was some inexperience or confusion regarding some activity, the recording of, in the, excuse me. In the 2023 bond bank accounts, primarily regarding the US, there were investments in US Treasury bonds. Those are to be recorded on the accounting records at cost. There was some confusion that we were, they were ended up using market value. And then the interest earnings on those, there were some confusions, confusion surrounding those. There was also noted that the sheriff, in the sheriff's office, there was not a reconciliation of the sheriff's bank account. It was noted that there was some staff turnover and just that duty was lost in the shuffle. And from what I understand, all the concerns regarding the internal controls for this have been resolved.
So it all got cleaned up and we've got a clean bill of health now?
In the audit, it will say that we'll have a finding for it, but the, it has been corrected going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
The second item that we have noted is internal controls for the preparation of the financial the financial statements. We're lacking this, that resulted in quite a few material adjustments that we had to post. Pretty much that was related to properly classifying transactions on the statements. We have gone over that with both Sherri and Michelle, and I think we have that straightened out going forward, so.
Thank you.
Other questions for the Commissioners? All right, I'll open it up again to public comment on this agenda item. All right, if there are none, we need a motion to authorize me to sign.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries. Update on Comprehensive Safety Action Plan from Houston Engineering.
Good evening. Sam Trebelkoch, Houston Engineering. With me today tonight is Kyle Tenaple. We're both transportation planners with Houston Engineering. Tonight, we just want to give you an update of where we are on the progress of the Safe Streets for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan that we started earlier this year. We're certainly on the second half of the project and moving forward and looking for your input as we move to the latter stages of this project. So I think one of the important things to note here is that this is looking at trying to make your road system as safe as possible. And I talked a lot about on the first project, and we've had open houses and public engagement about the reasons for the project, but we want to really get, kind of get into some of the results. And one of the things that we noted as we've started this project, what you see here is some of the fatal accidents that have occurred or just since we've started this project. And I think it just kind of highlights the importance of what we're doing and looking at and trying to make your road system safer for all people in the county. So one of the things that we've worked on a lot here is the safety analysis and really just kind of getting into some of the highlights of that. Looking at your crash breakdown, one thing that we noted, and you'll hear a lot in this presentation, is there's a lot that we found in terms of your, what we call KSI crashes, that's your severe or people that were killed on these accidents. And what we found was the angle crashes. So those are the crashes that occur at intersections. And a lot of times, that's when people are either not seeing a stop sign, they're running a stop sign, there's speed that's involved. So that's a big component of your major crashes and something that we really noted and you'll see later on, too. So in terms of accumulated collisions, we looked at 5,800 collisions, of which there was 151. That's over the past five years. You're typically on a study looking at the last five years. And we're not looking at the interstate system, that's kind of more of a federal area, but 4,500 collisions outside the interstate system and 101 that were just on the county-state system. So when we looked at that and broke it down more, we're looking at the high injury network. We're really focusing on where you're having the worst problems on, throughout your network. And so your high injury network accounts for 75% of those crashes, those severe crashes, on only 3% of your roadway network. So that's where we're focusing on, is really on 3% of your roadway network. Another thing we looked at was kind of your risk factor. You know, the things that, where you have more crashes, what types of things are we really need to be concerned about or looking at? Things like wider lane risks. In some cases, even left turn lanes in some contexts, sometimes if not used in the right situation, can cause problems. Very narrow or very wide lanes, so you've got to have the right-sized lanes. Sometimes the presence of a signal. All those kinds of things are things that we're looking at to try to determine some of your risks. And so that's something we accounted for. So again, this is your high injury network. And this is, again, 75% of your severe collisions on 3% of your roadway. Now, this includes those roadways within the municipalities, too. So we looked at everything. We looked at the municipality and the county roads. But we also know that jurisdictionally, Lincoln County is only going to be most interested in terms of improvements on those roadways outside the city. So that is what we looked at here and broke that down into the green and the orange roadways. So the green is inside the city limits. Those are things that we would continue to talk and provide information to the cities. The orange is what we're looking at in terms of making and developing projects and additional and recommending countermeasures for improvements to those roadways. So I'm going to move over to, and Kyle's going to talk about the public engagement that we did in Phase One.
Yeah, so good evening, everyone. Sam's going to get back up and talk about kind of what we're looking at and what type of projects we're going to be looking at on our HIN. Just wanted to give you an overview of our public engagement up to this point. So we did a mix of online engagement as well as in-person engagement. One of the ultimate goals of this plan is to make you eligible for federal grants that would help fund the projects that are identified in this plan and what they're really looking for is, has the public been asked what the issues are, what they'd like to see? That's a big component of this plan. And so we made it a point to do online and in-person engagement, so everyone had a chance to have comment. So this is our public website. It's a website called Social Pinpoint. It allowed users to go into a map and put pinpoints essentially down and express their concerns or what's working well. So the website, we had really good traffic. We shared it to all the Facebooks and the communities in the county. We had 1,200 unique website visits, so that's individuals that go onto the website to interact. We had 735 total contributions, and that broke down to 357 surveys completed and 378 map, pinpoints dropped on the map. We also did some in-person public engagement. We did open house here in the county courthouse. When was that? June 17th. So decent amount of engagement, but what worked a little bit better is what we call pop-up shops, basically bringing the open house to the people. So we went to a couple of community events throughout the county. Harrisburg Days, June 14th, and Teapot Days, June 21st. And so we talked to around 50 or 60 people during those events, and we also got some media attention as well. We had a Kelo online story, and Dakota News also did a story on the open house, so that was good to see. Some overall takeaways from the survey and the pinpoints, distracted driving is identified as a major problem. There's areas with narrow shoulders and needing, the more need for wider shoulders, further to yield, and we need more enhanced stop sign visibility. Like I said, or like Sam said, a lot of those crashes are happening at those two-way intersections of a county roadway system intersecting a state highway or a U.S. highway. And that goes along with the next point, intersection design and redesign. Some other important takeaways is bicycling. Walking is not safe. We didn't even have enough crash data to make any assumptions because there's not a lot of people walking and biking on the county system. So we did outreach to the bicyclist groups, and we figured out where they like to ride, and so that's going to then play into some projects later on. The population growth is creating traffic challenges, especially between that T, Harrisburg, and Sioux Falls area. The infrastructure was built at a time where that population wasn't as high, so there's issues that go along with that. And then also, speed is also an issue. So this is the HIN again, like you saw previously, and the green circles on the map are our highest locations of comment. So it was kind of cool to see the correlation of where people are expressing issues on the county roadway system and what the data is saying as well, because it's good to get a mix of qualitative and quantitative data, and it's good to see that there's correlation within the map. So I'm going to turn it back over to Sam, and he's going to close out, talk about draft goals, policies, and what's coming up next with the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. So just quickly, you know, some of the draft goals and policies that we're working through as, a lot of this is coming from the survey that we did. These are the goals that we are putting together, and there's some policies with this, and this is something you'll see more as the draft document comes out. But enhance safety education, reduce speed, increase stop sign compliance, it's a big thing, especially with those angle crashes, prioritize countermeasures, you know, improve safety over capacity and level of service, improve safety at rural intersections, and then find methods to improve safety for vulnerable users, which are bicyclists, pedestrians that we talked about earlier. So those are kind of the draft goals that we've been working through right now, and we'll be asking for comment early next year. One thing to note for this group here, for the county commission, is there's a requirement for the program for goal setting, and that would be a commitment to set a target date to move towards zero fatalities and serious injuries on your system or some significant decline. So that's something we'll be bringing forward to you as part of the adoption of this document, this plan itself. So certainly, we want to do this in the right way and gain your input how best to set that target. So we'll continue working on that. Project prioritization, we talked about a little bit already. 40% is on that highway injury network and crash rate. Also, that risk network I talked about, 20%. And then we have also things to make sure there's consistency with our planning documents. We look at the underrepresented priority bicycle areas, and then the public engagement that Kyle was talking about. So it's all part of kind of overall looking at setting your priorities for your projects. So this is the draft project prioritization map. We talked this over this morning with the study advisory team. We went through the top 10 projects a little bit more in depth, but this starts to give you, there's 30 projects that we put together based upon that high injury network. The countermeasures are being now identified for each of those projects to improve those situations, but we certainly want to and will be getting engagement from the public on each one of these to see if there's anything we're missing or if there's anything else that we should be looking at in terms of improvements. But that'll be part of what's next, is the implementation plan and Phase Two of that engagement. So this is what I was just talking about, implementation, Phase Two public engagement, and then we'll be coming, we would think, early next year for county commission approval sometime in the first quarter. With that, I would take any of your questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for Sam? All right. Thanks, Sam. Any public input on the presentation? All right. Next, we have motion to approve and authorize execution of a contract for housing of prisoners.
Good evening. Sheriff Swenson, Lincoln County. I have a simple request that Minnella County sent us an amendment to the contract to adjust the daily rate for prisoner care from $112 per day per inmate to $131.90. The only issue that this could cause is a late end-of-year supplement to the budget because I budgeted for the $112. This came out after the budgets were done. But it needs the chair's signature.
All right. Any other questions for our-
When is this going into effect?
January 1st.
January 1st?
Correct.
Other questions for Sherri?
You don't have much choice.
Zero. Exactly.
Well, but Steve and I talked, and he told me that he's got a lot of people on ankle bracelets and stuff, so they're keeping it out. So he's doing his best to keep people out of the jail to save us some money.
Yep.
So he's doing pretty good.
Thank you.
All right. Any public input on the request? All right. If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Got a motion from Aaron's.
Second.
From Otten.
From Otten. Alicia, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes. I hope you're going to be funny.
I was just going to say, everybody's sticking around for the exciting stuff, I guess. I'm going to try and keep it light, I guess. If you have questions that pop up, feel free to shoot them out. This is the first time we're doing this, obviously, in coordination with the most recent legislation. I know other jurisdictions, they've just kind of passed out the pamphlet and basically said, have you read this? I thought a more, you know, informal presentation would be appropriate. Thought it was appropriate for a night meeting. We have more general public attendance as well. So just to get started, just some disclaimers. A lot of these slides are my impressions. I'll admit that I stole some of them from Stephen Blair, who was the Open Meetings Commission attorney for a while, and he would do some open meetings trainings. I'll also do a disclaimer that I put this on the agenda probably two months ago, and I was going to change some of the script errors, and I forgot to do so. I got busy, and so there are some errors, but it doesn't change the substance of the presentation. I'll also note that there are some opinions in here from the Open Means Commission. I thought it'd be good to cite to some specific examples, just so people could kind of see what violation or no violation may be. Just for your own edification, you can always go to the Open Meetings brochure that's on the South Dakota Attorney General's website, has a breakdown of all the statutes, and that's a good resource for anybody to go look for their review. So just kind of an overview, we're going to go over what constitutes a meeting, what is required under open meeting laws, when is it permissible to convene in a closed executive session, what would happen if a violation occurs, and also some examples. So just kind of the basics here, an official meeting of a public body, an official meeting of any public body are open to public unless a specific law is cited to close the meeting, that'd be our executive session. There are also some additional constitutional and statutes that allow executive sessions. We usually don't typically run into those. Those are mostly state statutes or other public subdivisions. What qualifies as a meeting, an official meeting, is any meeting of a quorum of a public body. You can kind of read through this. I'm not going to read through it all, but what I would like to highlight is, most recently amended, that would include email exchanges, text exchanges, or any modem, you know, telecommunications. So what that would be is if you have a chain text message or anything like that of anybody of a public body, that would actually technically be a public meeting, and there is a specific example, a local one, from not too long ago that we can cite, too, that was a violation by using that, you know, email exchanges back and forth for official business. The purpose of open, or excuse me, open meeting laws is to prevent actions being taken at secret meetings where it is impossible for the interested public to become fully informed and detect improper influences. So I think that boils down to a two-part test when you're looking at open meetings, and if there's a violation, first you have to look and see if there's a quorum. Obviously, with our commission, quorum would be three commissioners. And then the second part of the test is, was there a discussion of official business or public policy, meaning any, really, any matter related to the activities of the entity. Notice exceptions if a public body members provide information or attend the official meeting of other political subdivisions. So the example I gave was if you're attending a Minnella County meeting and the agenda is posted up there, we don't need to post notice. However, obviously, best practice is still give notice that there's a possibility of a quorum. We do that. I don't know if the public has noticed, but we notice everything now. That was kind of- That was kind of in coordination with our commission office that we noticed that any type of possible quorum that is going to happen, whether it be at another commission meeting, whether it be just at a private event or even a political event. So some exceptions when you're talking about public policy is, you know, you have lunches, sporting events, social events. So I think there's one past commissioner had made a comment, so wait, every time we go to a basketball game, if all of a sudden there's three of us there, that should have been noticed? No. But there is also that perception versus reality. If you have three commissioners sitting up in the nosebleed section at T. Kennedy Sanford Arena, I think there's going to be a public perception that they're talking about county business. So just if you're going to a social event, sporting event, best practice is not sit by each other. Non-governmental entity event, I think we're familiar with this one, is any event hosted by a non-governmental entity to which quorum of a public body is invited and public policy may be discussed. What that means is that's a very low bar, public policy, that's a very low bar of anything that may be discussed. I'm going to be rip the bandaid off. I mean, we had our commission, there was a violation last year regarding the semicarbon pipeline solutions, private event, that was invitations were sent, wasn't noticed and we had a violation. Some of the things that you took out of that open meetings violation and the discussion of that commission was it'd be the members of the public body, it's their responsibility to ensure there's no quorum present. If there is going to be a quorum present, make sure you notify staff or have it published that there's a possibility of a quorum. Teleconference is any official meeting may be conducted by teleconference. Be audio, video, electronic medium. Teleconference may be used to conduct a hearing or take final disposition regarding an administrative rule. That's more from a South Dakota state aspect when you're talking about rules and regulations or administrative rules. Member is deemed present if the member answers present to the roll call conducted by teleconference. Each voted, an official meeting held by teleconference may be taken by a voice vote. We don't do a lot of voice votes here at the Lincoln County Commission. It's usually a straight roll call vote, but if there was a voice vote and there was a negative vote, a roll call would then have to be taken. When you do have a meeting by teleconference and the public may notice this, when we have a commissioner that will notify staff that they're going to be appearing by phone or Zoom, you have to provide not only participation from the public here at the location, but you also have to provide other mediums of participations, whether that be a Zoom number, a call-in number, or anything like that, we have to provide that. And so you'll see that on the agenda, that there's a means for public participation if it is going to be held by teleconference. And just a disclaimer that teleconference rules do not apply to executive session. I think that goes without saying. Most recently amended, and I think this was always kind of the rule and this was always the interpretation, that emails, business conducted by emails may violate public meeting laws, but what they did was actually codify it and put it into 12512.5 and exchange of information by audio, electronic medium, including the internet. I will say emailing through a quorum is allowable if it's just for scheduling or confirming attendance, so we can do that. That was a change as well. So if we were just looking for scheduling a meeting or confirming attendance of the commission, we can have that done by email. Public comment, public body shall reserve at every official meeting by the public body a period for public comment limited at the public body's discretion as to the time allowed for each topic and total time allowed for public comment, but not so limited as provide no public comment at all. And I would like to, I don't have it in here, but one thing I would like to point out is based upon our public meeting laws, there isn't a requirement that public comment needs to be given for each specific item on the agenda. Just the requirement by law is just a period for public comment. You'll see in a lot of smaller public political subdivisions that they just have, you know, maybe 10 minutes for public comment, but they don't allow public comment on each specific item. Lincoln County and other larger political subdivisions have allowed for public comment on each specific item. Quite frankly, I think it makes a better record. You know what they're talking about and it points to the specific agenda item that way and so I think it makes for a cleaner record overall. Well, I will back up and talk about our public comment policy. We do have one adopted based upon the most recent rules of procedure that were adopted that does need to be reviewed annually, so that will be coming back before you in January for review for any amendments, so just wanted to kind of highlight that. Notice of meetings, public body shall provide public notice by means of proposed agenda that is visible, readable, and accessible for at least 24 hours immediately preceding the meeting. One thing that, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit later, but the task force or committee, I don't know what they're calling themselves on, on open meeting laws that just met this morning, they talked about best practice when you have 24 hours and some of those attorneys know when you have less than, you know, 10 days, you don't count weekends and things like that. So that's why we typically post on Fridays because it allows for that additional day for publication. And so my point is, is holidays, weekends, things like that, it should, you should take that in consideration when you're posting the agenda, that those days may not count when you're looking at a notification time period. Basics of the agenda, daytime, location of the meeting, minimum identification of itemization of matters to be discussed. What's interesting about that one is that's more of an interpretation from, you know, how much detail, it's kind of in the eye of the beholder. I think Lincoln County would do a great job of notifying the public of what the agenda item is going to be discussed. Sometimes we could work on our facts and vetting a little bit better, but at the end of the day, I think the public generally knows what we're going to be voting on. Kind of continuing on, public body shall provide public notice by means of proposed agenda. And when I say proposed agenda is, and we've done this from time to time, you can amend the agenda, you can add an item at the beginning of the agenda. It's not best practice, we don't like to do it. It's usually a case of, hey, we need this change order processed timely to ensure that we get this best price, whatever it may be. So we try and limit it, but it is allowable. It's just not a good practice because obviously it doesn't provide the general public advanced notice at all times and so we try to limit our utilization of that method. Special rescheduled meetings, all previous requirements still apply, however, the information and the notice shall be delivered to in person, by mail, or email, or telephone to members of local news media who have requested notice. There is no definition of what news media is, whether that be print or otherwise, so the AG has taken a position that includes broadcast and print media. Again, you still have the 24 hours advance notice. Executive session, I'm not going to go through these because quite frankly, we do a great job here in Lincoln County when we have an executive session. Most executive session postings in other political subdivisions, they'll just say executive session, but not lists even the statute or anything like that. We've made the decision, you're going to list the statute and we spell out which statute so then the general public doesn't have to go and look, which one are they talking about? Which one is this? We list it that if we're going under 125.2 subsection 1, while we're discussing qualifications, competence, performance of an employee. And the reason why we don't want to go into more detail of that is because a lot of times, quite frankly, that could lead to litigation against the county if we publicize anything more than that because we do have sensitive matters that we do have to discuss. Any official action concerning the matters discussed in the executive session shall be made during an open official meeting. So if we're talking about something in an executive session, we always come out here and take official, official action. Shall only be held a majority vote to the members of such body present and voting must be placed on the agenda. Again, we place those as a placeholder because quite frankly, you just don't know when they're going to pop up, so we always like to have those as a placeholder just in case we need to go into executive session. Kind of already ran through this, so I don't need to go into any more detail of that. Minutes, any board or commission shall keep detailed minutes of the proceedings of all regular or special meetings. I will note that the statute with board meeting minutes and being detailed, that actually only applies to state agencies. It actually doesn't apply to any other political subdivision and that was, the commission actually had a most recent case in that Green Valley sanitary district because there was complaint that there weren't detailed minutes. So I'll kind of get to that later in the presentation, just talking about today's task force meeting. But otherwise, I do think Lincoln County does a good job of advising of what topics were discussed, whether there was a public comment and how the vote occurred. With regard to the meeting minutes, unapproved draft minutes of any public meeting shall be made available for inspection by any person within 10 business days after the meeting. This requirement is not applicable if audio or video of the meeting is available to the public. And here in Lincoln County, we record all meetings and I believe that was a requirement implemented by this board that all meetings had to be recorded. I will note that if there's any violation of meeting minutes, that would not fall under the open meetings complaint, that would be a separate complaint under 127. That was also an issue in that Green Valley Open Meetings Commission complaint. There was complaint that the meeting minutes weren't published on time and that's not within their purview. So what happens if an alleged violation occurs? If a complaint alleges a violation in this chapter by the Board of County Commissioners, it will be forwarded to the state's attorney. I will note when the complaint, when a complaint is filed, it needs to be under oath, so when somebody will file an affidavit, that would meet the requirements of 23A, it has to be an affidavit, setting forth the facts, and also under oath by the complainant that they believe that an open meetings violation has occurred. And you can kind of read through the rest, but the state's attorney's office will then review, determine whether there's merit, whether there's not. If it's a county commission, they can refer that to another state's attorney's office or to the attorney general's office. We also have that discretion if we believe there's a conflict with our office. We have an ethical obligation to do that. Task force committees and working groups, they have to follow open meeting regulations if they are exercising sovereign power. So that's if you give them the ability to reach a decision on your behalf. That doesn't happen very often, that happens more at the legislative level and not at the county level. But if it's just a committee that's providing recommendations, technically they don't have to follow open meeting laws, but they're always encouraged to do so. And this actually came up at one point, if there is a recommendation under 127.1.18, you actually have to wait two meetings or before you can actually take official action. So if there's a recommendation from the task force or committee, you have to wait two meetings before you can actually take action. Or excuse me, next meeting. Public records in conjunction with public meeting, in addition to meeting minutes, SDCL 127.1.16 requires any public body must post meeting materials on the public body's website or make those materials available to the public at least 24 hours prior to the meeting or when made available to members of the public body, whichever is later. And we'll have that frequently where, you know, we'll have a hearing and somebody will bring in materials later. We always post those usually on the agenda or they're made part of the record in the auditor's office so they can be made available for review if there is a FOIA request for those materials, they're always made part of the record. This is just kind of another review, this would be if it's not a county commission complaint, so I don't need to go over that. If the complaint or any investigation file is sent to the open meeting commission for further action, then what they can do is, public bodies given an opportunity to respond and this is actually in the, in the hearing, hearing is scheduled, they can respond, arguments made, majority of open meeting commission takes and makes the determination. One thing, and there were questions regarding the violation here in Lincoln County, is prosecution after the fact. If there's deemed a violation, there can be no prosecution after the fact and there can be no appeal by either party. So once it's referred to the county, or the, excuse me, the open meetings commission, there's no prosecution after the fact and there's no appeal of that decision. I've already kind of touched on this, there's different enforcement mechanisms under chapter 127 as opposed to chapter 125. One thing, this question most, it came up to me recently from a citizen, is recording public bodies under 125.11, requires public bodies to allow recording audio or video of their meetings if the recording is reasonable, obvious, and not disruptive. This requirement does not apply to those portions of the meeting confidential executive sessions. So what that means, you know, it's kind of hard, it's kind of one of those, I don't know, the old legal axiom of, I'll know it when I see it, when it's disruptive, if they're getting in the face of commissioners, things like that. Obviously that's going to be disruptive, but I think that'd be a case by case basis of what would determine somebody being disruptive. Kind of going through some examples, in this case, it'd be Yankton County Commission. Commissioner releases agenda for upcoming meeting in compliance with 24-hour notice requirement. At the start of the scheduled meeting, the commission adds an agenda item to appoint a new superintendent to its utility department. Is it a violation? No, because it's a proposed agenda and they can amend the agenda at the time of adoption. Another example, city manager sends an email to the city commissioners asking if they would approve an additional expenditure on a road project. Commissioners individually respond, stating that the overage was okay, but no formal vote was taken. This was deemed to be a violation. This is the local one that I was talking about, it was actually when I was in Lincoln County as a prosecutor before, that they deemed there was a violation and it constituted a teleconference. And under the most recent legislative amendments, obviously, like I said, it was always kind of the interpretation, but now it's actually codified. Another example, excuse me. School board went into executive session to discuss the elimination of school program discussions necessarily involve the competency of the teacher and personnel directing the program. The open means commission deemed that this wasn't a violation because of the underlying discussion regarding the competency of the personnel directing the program. City commissioners discuss the reorganization of the functions of various divisions in the city during executive session. Is this a violation? Yes. The commissioners can't use executive session to discuss reorganization, the functions of various, or the functions of various divisions of the city. You know, one topic that kind of always kind of comes up when I hear some of these complaints is, well, wouldn't that fall under qualifications, competency, or performance? And no, because you're just overall talking about the reorganization of a, of a committee or, excuse me, of a, of a division, so it's not directly tied to the personnel. Board requests to go into executive session to discuss qualifications of a prospective public officer or employee. During the session, a member then starts to discuss contract negotiations for utility work. Would this be a violation? No and yes. Obviously it's not a violation when they're discussing the qualifications, but once they deviate from that subject matter and go and talk about another topic that wasn't to be discussed, that would then be a violation and kind of a disclaimer to all political subdivisions, just in case somebody wants to steal my presentation. I don't necessarily recommend that, but if they want to, you know, one thing to do, you could always advise, stay on, stay on task. You know, it's, that's simple as that. Okay, we're in here for a specific reason, let's stay on task. The board discusses the qualifications of a prospective employee in executive session. The board votes to approve the hiring of that individual in session and no official action is taken in an open meeting, that would be a violation because they didn't take the official action in the open meeting. Commission goes into executive session to discuss the discipline of an employee. The commission comes out of executive session, has a motion a second on the personnel action discussed in executive session. After the meeting is revealed that the employee action was, the firing of one of its city employees, was it a violation? Yes. You know, we have it, a lot of times, that's why we have departments, you know, if there's any employee actions, but if it's somebody who's under, directly under the commission office, then that would have to be a public, public action. Quorum of commissioners meet with the sheriff to discuss county law enforcement issues. Would that be a violation? Yes. You're discussing public policy, I think that goes without saying. Proposed agenda states executive session regarding personnel issues, the commission will be interviewing candidates for the highway superintendent position. Commission then broke from executive session and there was a motion a second to offer the position to a candidate. No, there wasn't violation. SDCL 125.1.1 does not require the agenda to specify whether the agenda item is for discussion only or the action will be taken. So this one was more pertaining to, well, it didn't say that there was going to be an official motion and it was just the general subject matter, we thought it was going to be discussion only. There actually is no requirement that, you know, we have to give a notice to the public that there will be a motion or not. Here in Lincoln County, we've chosen to do that and just out of transparency, we always notify the public whether there's going to be a motion or board action on an item and I think that's just better inform the public. Mayor of the city calls each county commissioner individually and requests to use the county's four H grounds for an event. This kind of goes back to the email, I mean, you're kind of just subverting the spirit of the open meetings commission when you're doing that. of just subverting the spirit of the Open Meetings Commission when you're doing that. During the next meeting, the chair of the commission states that the county has approved the city's use of the four-H grounds for the sponsored event. Yes, while the conversations do not constitute a violation on their own, once you come into the meeting and say, hey, we already approved this, well, then that was your official board action, and that's where the violation occurred. Five member city councils invited to a luncheon hosted by a development corporation to discuss the benefits of tax increment finance districts. Commissioner, I put this one in just for you, Commissioner Schmidt. Proposed TIF is scheduled to go before the council for approval or denial on its next agenda. No notice of the possible quorum is published, and three council members go to luncheon. Yes, it's a violation. It's discussing possibility of public policy. Now, I'll field any questions you may have. If it's about a specific violation, I'd like to not give a legal opinion from the dais if I could make that request.
Anybody have any questions for Drew?
Not at this time.
All right.
Drew, I'd like to thank you for going through that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think you pretty well aired everything that needed to be aired, so it's on record.
All right. Well, and I'm also happy if there's public comment, if somebody has a question, I can hopefully answer that, too, so.
All right. Is there public comment on Drew's presentation?
No.
Well, there you go.
Shocked. That takes it off.
And that is our last regular agenda. And now we have the opportunity for public comment for anybody that wants to come up.
Scott Montgomery, fair view. I just want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, sir. Likewise, Scott.
Amy Hahn, Sioux Falls. I have this really long, that speech I was going to give you guys for three minutes, but I'm ready to go home, and I'm assuming everyone else is, so I'm going to keep this a lot shorter than I had originally planned. So on November 14th and 15th, we held our gold standard hand count expo. I saw one commissioner pop their head in, so thank you to that commissioner for checking it out. We had over 115 citizens gather in Sioux Falls on a two-week notice. What we did there was we conducted a full mock election using actual ballots from past elections. They were all hand counted. We had 12 races, 1,000 ballots, and we had four small bipartisan teams. We counted those in four and a half hours. I will say that my team was the fastest. Sherry, I think you can remember when we did the hand counting, the poor little lady that was with me, she was like, if we keep going this fast, they're not going to give us lunch. I know, we still got lunch. Everything was done with video documentation, strict verification. Every 25 ballots, we changed the color of the ink from blue to red and verified every 25 ballots that we had the right count. We had 74 South Dakota citizens that day that were certified to hand count, and that is with the gold standard. On day two, we actually stress test that gold standard and came to the conclusion that the gold standard is actually the gold standard. So again, thank you to the commissioner that came and checked it out, and I hope that we hear more about it in the future.
Lyndon Montgomery, February, South Dakota. Happy Thanksgiving to you guys. The, what I bringing up is just kind of a circle back because after last meeting, there were some citizens, we wondered about some things. And the one thing was the airport board that was discussed on October 7th, where that the second reading in public hearing was unapproved. And, but then I heard that it was going to be, you're going to continue with the same five, but add a commissioner and a citizen. Haven't heard anything more about that, and I didn't know if that's going to be another public hearing number two. But I think with the amount of things that is going to be coming up with the airport, I would like to see a full board. The other thing was what's happening with the courthouse, the old courthouse over here. After, you know, you did the inspection and everything, we haven't heard anything more about what going forward for that old courthouse is going to look like. And then the one thing which I brought up during budget times was possibly looking at for Lincoln County having a motor pool. Since you have so many vehicles, it's just, you know, I kind of, we discussed it a little bit, and I know the few citizens and a couple of commissioners thought that might be interesting. I just think having a better accountability for all our vehicles that you guys own, that Lincoln County owns, that we can do better with our equipment and maybe even have it last longer. And then sharing of vehicles between departments would probably be easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment tonight? All right. Any commissioner reports?
Madam Chair. Today, the State Department of Transportation held a petition filed by the Harrisburg City Council and the Harrisburg School District to lower the speed limit on Highway 115 from 85th Street South to the Harrisburg Corner. And the proposal was to drop it from 55 to 45. Both the school district and the city made a presentation telephonically in front of the State Transportation Commission today. And what was decided by the state commission was to not adopt a lower speed limit at this time, with the caveat that over the next six to nine months, there would be a number of improvements made on Highway 115, some signalized intersections, some longer turning lane to the Harrisburg School, and a few other improvements. And so, and then they decided, or the department said, it was going to be conducting a number of studies between now and then, and they definitely want to revisit the issue sooner rather than later. So I know that there were people who were interested in knowing the outcome of that. So it definitely has the attention of state authorities. That's who has control over the speed limit on 115. And so they're definitely paying attention, and they certainly invited the, any petitioner to come back in the future. Next thing I wanted to say was, on December 1st, I'm going to be holding a town hall meeting at the Meadow Barn in Harrisburg at 6:30 PM at night, and I want to invite the public to attend so that they can talk about any issues of importance to them. And then I'll be doing, and then there are some state legislators who have committed to attending that. And then there'll be an additional town hall on December 2nd at 6:30 at the outdoor campus. And then there'll be a third one at T-City Hall at 6:30 on December 3rd. So welcome the, anybody and everybody can attend, and tell us what's on their mind and what they're thinking about, and we'll, we'll be there listening, taking their input, hopefully providing constructive comments to other officials. So. And lastly, I want to say, have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chris Otten, anything for you?
I do. We had an 85th Street groundbreaking today, and I know Commissioner Schmidt won't bring it up, but he was honored during that with a golden shovel. So I'll let him do some comments on that later, too.
The thing keeps trying to get his foot.
That was a good segue.
Yeah, let's get this shovel out of here. It was, 85th Street interchange, briefly, will probably be a game changer because of the growth that it will provide for the county over the next, forever, for the next 30 years. It has, it has conservatively looked at about $2 to $3 billion of economic growth for the county, and for the cities of T and Harrisburg, and for the school districts, and for the city. So in the long run, it is a way in which I'm, I'm growth. I don't necessarily share, I think growth pays for itself. I don't, I'm not of the idea, but growth is what we have lived on for a long time in our county. And it concerns me when the state legislature wants to cap growth because that's a supplement to our budget. But the 85th Street interchange was, and I want to apologize to Commissioner Putnam and Commissioner Aaron's, I didn't introduce them today. I did not see them in the crowd. But we did have Commissioner Otten and Commissioner Landine, and Terry was there, and Paul was there as well. And we had a...
Our auditor was there.
Oh, good God. How could I forget? Oh, boy. That'll be, we'll be gravelling in her office before tonight's over. And Sherry was there as well. And I just want to tell you, make amends for this. We financed, as this whole thing, as a TIF district in which the taxes that are generated from that help our commitment to that. And without Lincoln County's commitment, this would never have happened. We would have never had this interchange at all. So I feel very proud of Lincoln County and their commitment and their contribution, and that we were able to put that over the edge. And they did have, they handed out this shovel, and they got one. And I, this isn't my shovel, this is your shovel. So this one, I want placed somewhere in our walls or something. That it shows that Lincoln County made a commitment to its own future, so that we're able to provide the services and do as good a job in providing for law enforcement and for our highways and for every department here. So I think that we have, we have done our service and done well. So that's all I have on interchange, and I thank all the commissioners for their support. There's a couple, one of the, couple of things I want to mention. ICAP, many, many of you may not know, Inner Lakes Community Action, is a CAP agency which provides lots of services for, around Sioux Falls and this area. And ICAP has the Heartland House, you know, which is for people that have kids and families where they can go for refuge and to stay well. They're working through difficulties. It provides for shelter, it provides for revitalization of housing, it provides for meals on wheels, it provides for transportation. We don't necessarily get all of that because we have a CAP agency out of Wagner, which, I don't know, someday they may get here and tell us what they do. But all I know is that the CAP agencies were very worried about government shutdown. Well, now they're able to continue and carry on with that. So that was a big item. The other thing is, I attended a AI program sponsored by a DSU. And AI, to me, is either going to be the biggest blessing that we've ever had, or could be the biggest curse. But the potential, what that has available, is absolutely astounding. You know, I, they had a program on how that can affect county government. And really, it can have a profound effect. I mean, you could, you could take every county in the center part of our state, which does not have a great deal of population, and run the thing. And you know what that would all mean. But anyway, that was pretty profound. I've asked President Griffin, who is president of DSU, to come down, and she will be coming down in the new year and talking about AI and county government. So I think that's going to be a real interesting time, and we're going to have that on an evening meeting so everybody can attend. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And may I follow up with one thing?
Sure.
On the 85th Street interchange, Senator Thune was also there. So we wanted to thank him for coming as well. Because he, they, he had a lot of federal money.
$300,000.
Yeah.
It was 30 million.
30 million.
It was 30 million.
Excuse me.
You guys again, a lot of money's wrong.
I think we're getting tired.
We're very conservative around here, you know. Anyway, yeah, 30 million. It was a $54 million project.
All right. Any other commissioner reports? Commissioner Putnam, anything for you?
Nope.
All right.
Good. You guys said everything.
Yeah. Everybody said anything I was going to say, so we need executive for anything?
Just the only thing I can say is, everybody has very, very good to.
Kathy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Is there a second? I got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.